All right. I apologize for the delay, everyone. We were trying to get four for our quorum. But seeing that we have not received the fourth person, I'm going to call it to order, the August 20th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. G, can you please take the role?
Ms. Huckabee.
Here.
Mr. Krasner is absent. Mr. Quintero is absent. Mr. Rankin is absent. Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Keys is absent. Mr. Wood is here.
Here. That is, as I indicated, a lighter attendance than we normally achieve. Before we adopt the agenda, there has been brought to my attention that we want to talk about City Hall renovations. So I would like to have that formally put onto the agenda as an item. You're saying 13B or just, you think that's?
Yeah, the second work session, I guess.
Okay. So if you could make a motion to conclude the City Hall renovation.
You do it, I'll second.
Under 13B.
Because I don't have it in front of me.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I vote we adopt the agenda with the addition of one item under 12, an additional work session item involving an update on the plans for the City Hall.
And I'll second that.
All right. And I'm for it, so we don't need to vote on that. All right. We don't have any speakers this evening, despite Mr. Stoddard's best attempts, so thank you for trying again. People are on vacation, as you can see. No old business, new business, or other business. So let's move to the approval of minutes. But actually, we might want to table this discussion.
You might want to rate on that.
Can we get a motion to continue the approval of minutes based on our attendance?
I move to continue the minutes from previous meeting.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Do you want to do that to a date certain?
To, well, I don't, September 4th is our next meeting?
Next.
It's scheduled for then.
No, we definitely haven't. It's always a chaotic first day of school and planning commission meeting, always. So to the, is your motion for September 4th?
Yeah, mine is.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Passes unanimously. Planning Commission reports, I hear you two have been very busy. So why don't you regale us with those stories?
Which ones do you want to take on?
Well, I can, we had the first community meeting with the update of Chapter 5 of their comprehensive plan, which is the Environment, Natural Resources and Environment chapter. This is past Saturday. We had 39 attendees, which I thought was excellent for a midsummer session. And had very good presentations from outside speakers. Paul Ferguson joined us from Arlington County, and Jay Wilson from Washington State.
Yeah, yeah. He was very good.
So overall, I thought it was very successful. I also attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago. The other comprehensive plan update process that we have underway, which is the Housing chapter, and that was also a very successful meeting. So our activities through the Planning Department to update and keep our comprehensive plan in tip-top shape seem to be progressing very nicely.
And then I think we were both, attended the council meeting when Founder's Row was passed on.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. And then I think the only other one that, to add to it, is Economic Development Authority. And that ended up with a closed session with some discussion on.
They were talking about the lot next to Cherry Hill Park, possibility of the city purchasing that just as a conceptual idea.
But that was the subject matter of it. The only other thing I'd like to add is I thought that Tim's article in News Press, the opinion piece on the educational possibilities of the new school with the geothermal and all the different alternative types of energy use was excellent.
Well, thank you.
And I do think that that's something we, I would very much follow through on with the principals and the teachers up at the high school. I do think that it'd be an excellent idea for the kids to be involved. There were some kids that did some, and the drafting group that did some ideas for the new school for, but it would be good for them to see how, you know, the real thing came out and to be more involved in it. And also definitely, any of the geothermal energy thing would be a real winner to learn about. And I just hope our kids will be really involved in getting a learning situation out of it, you know, since it's going to be probably breaking ground next spring. And so some of them will be right in the building the next year when a lot of this is going on. And be excellent. Fantastic. But if you didn't get a chance to read it, read it. Good one.
Do you want to talk about your article? Your opinion piece?
Well, I was basically identifying some of the highlights from the RFP submission of the winning team, the Gilbane construction team, and just identifying all of the very up-to-date sustainability features that they included in their plan. And so the purpose of the article is just to highlight those for the community and point out that in addition to providing a 21st century learning environment for the students, which after all is the primary purpose of it, that the building itself also will be very much of a teaching entity when it comes to the environment that the students have to live into as they grow up. So thank you for your comments. I'm amazed at just reading various articles about how many schools in Virginia now are adopting solar panels and incorporating that into their teaching curriculum. It's really caught fire in most states.
Because I gather they can get all kinds of information from the display board for what's going on.
Real-time information on what energy that they're producing. And like I said, they can incorporate that into their teaching curriculum.
Well, I'd like to add just a little bit more about the environmental meeting this past Saturday. We had quite a few new faces show up. You know, a lot of people are usually there, but there were some new faces. There was a lady there from the Byron, which I thought was excellent. And then somebody there who's going to be purchasing one of the new cottages down Railroad Avenue. So it was nice to see some new people that we've not seen at meetings before because of the issues and everything. And I do think that, I think City Hall really, particularly environmental groups, they've got to get more and more information out to the public as far as just all the things that are going on right now, because there's a lot of new things that I was complimented them on the last informational brochure that they put out concerning that you can't put plastic, you know, the thin plastic in, like, plastic bags or anything in the trash or in the recycling thing anymore, because it just gobbles everything up. But the fact is, is that information's got to get out, because sometimes they can't, you know, breaks down on the machinery and everything. But interesting, it was just nice to see some new faces.
Mr. Stoddard, where do we stand with the comprehensive, the comp plan update as it relates to environment? What's the next step? This was a community outreach, and then where do we head from here on that issue?
Sure. So for a lot of the comprehensive plan chapters, I think, I want to make sure that it's well-known that a lot of folks are working on this. In fact, these are very exciting chapters because the planning staff is not serving as the lead author or lead operator on any of these plans. It's Dana Lewis for the Housing chapter in the city's Housing and Human Services Department, along with Alex Millen. And then on the Environment chapter, it's Kate Walker, the city's Environmental Programs Coordinator. So this is an exciting opportunity for the planning staff that we are branching out, that we always say that the comp plan belongs to the entire community, and now the authoring belongs to the entire staff. So this is an exciting opportunity for us. In terms of process for both chapters, the planning staff is serving in a consultant role as the, both the chapters go through the update process, and we're trying to stay as close as we can to the process that's been used for previous chapters. So they've both gone to Planning Commission, they've both gone to their keyboards, they've both gone to the council, they've both had public meetings. I think for both efforts, what you'll see next, Housing has already wrapped up their survey, Environment will probably be launching a survey soon. I expect you'd see another check-in with Planning Commission and Council for both groups, and then going out to the boards and commissions. Hopefully, both groups can get out to the boards and commissions in October, November. That would line up for a February, March adoption. If they can't get out to the boards and commissions in October, November, then they'd probably be looking at a formal adoption at the next window of opportunity, which is post-budget action, probably in May.
Okay. Yeah, February's a busy time for us.
Fantastic work by staff.
Yeah, I was excited to see how well-run it was.
I mean, really fantastic.
And also how much participation there was across departments. I thought that was really an exciting turn in the comp planning process.
All right, great. Well, let's move on to the Planning Director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Brief report for you in memo form. The Planning Commission work plan, I want to step through a few of those items, but before I do, item number two is the Real Estate News Bulletin put out by the city's Economic Development Office, which at this moment is Becky Whitman. And it highlights a number of businesses that have opened recently, a lot of them restaurants and food establishments, as well as an education center STEM tree, and several things that are still in the works, like the Aldi grocery store. The, let's see, what was the third item? The third item was the Environment Chapter public kickoff, which Commissioner Stevens already went into. The Planning Commission work plan, which I want to jump to, just to keep you all apprised of what's going on. West Falls Church project, staffing changes on that project. The city elected not to continue its contract with Lee Goldstein as the project manager for the West Falls Church project. Instead, Carly Aubrey has been promoted to serve in that role, so she'll now carry the dual roles of principal planner as well as West Falls Church project manager. I think that's a positive move for the project, that she was already going to be the lead planner for the entitlement process, handling both the high school site plan as well as the special exception process and the other entitlement efforts. So now she'll be serving more as a day-to-day role on that project as the project manager. Just a side note on that, that does mean that the city's planning staff is actively recruiting now for two entry-level planner positions, both as toward current planning efforts, to keep pace with the level of activity going on in the city. Those recruitments have been out, and I think we're close to making some recommendations and getting some offer letters out. So hopefully, we'll be fully staffed before the October council action to select the preferred candidate through the RFP process.
Tim, you forgot the Van Buren Bridge.
Oh, there was a ribbon cutting under mine. There was a very exciting ribbon cutting on the Van Buren Bridge. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but I know a number of city staff were, as well as dignitaries from around the region. The Van Buren Bridge, for folks who don't know, was funded through a range of different funding streams. There were state of good repair funds, which were available through VITA. There was also regional money available through the NDTA. So certainly a collaborative process to get the bridge funded and constructed. And I would encourage everyone to go check out the bridge, that it includes a number of design features. There's decorative stamping on the stream side of the bridge. There's also a wider sidewalk that used to exist. I think in the long term, that 12-foot sidewalk could be used not only for pedestrian and bicycle passage, but also for commemorative materials. That one park is named after Benjamin Danaker, one park is named after Isaac Crossman, one park's in Arlington, one park's in Falls Church. There's a boundary stone right there, so a lot of opportunity for history and education. It also happens to be that we were able to affect the realignment of the walking and biking trails in that area, that previously the trail through Crossman Park and the trail through Danaker didn't meet where they came to the street edge. The ramping is installed to make that possible. The trail on the Crossman side has been updated. Arlington is updating Benjamin Danaker Park, so they'll have an opportunity to update their trail, so we really are able to knit these different transportation modes together for just one bridge.
As someone who bikes a lot, I'm very appreciative that the bridge is now open.
Back open.
We don't have to take the detour anymore.
Through the top lot.
Continue on, yeah.
Oh, we did not, we did not do a Fremont Troll. I don't know if anyone's been Fremont.
That's a great example.
But there is a very exciting Troll statue under the Fremont Bridge north of Seattle, so. There are lots of fun things you can do with infrastructure. Some of the elements that are the design elements in this bridge can serve as guideposts for the design of future bridges in the city. I think it's important for communities to highlight their infrastructure, but also to highlight what's going on in the natural environment. When you're going over a street, tell people you're going over a street, so that they can have that.
2018 in it.
Mm-hmm. We did get a date stone into the design of the bridge, so that people can look back and know when was this constructed, and get a sense that the city is a place that exists over time, and have a sense of connection.
Maybe summer, but boy, there's a lot going on.
There is stuff going on. There's always something going on in the little city. West End Smaller Plan, we're still planning for a fall kickoff. We want to time that properly with the RFP process. The East End Tap, scheduled for November 14 and 15. That scope has been solidified. It'll include the Eaton Center, the multifamily properties along Roosevelt, the BJ's Wholesale, as well as the commercial properties and the public storage in between. Let's see, current planning, no updates on Broad and Row. Founder's Row, as you all know, got its special exception approval by council. That'll be coming to you all as a site plan. I think tentatively, we're thinking about a September 4th work session, followed by action at the second September meeting. That site plan has come before you as a work session before, so September 4 would be a cleanup to make sure that things that were included in the entitlement code of the special exception process did properly get accounted for in the site plan, and that would lead to a clean action at the second meeting in September. No updates on Park and Lee, Oak Haven. Library site plan is before you as an agenda item tonight. There's a staff report, I'll speak through that, speak to that when it comes up on the agenda. No updates on the other items. On high school site plan, city staff is working with the high school staff to put together a schedule, not only for planning entitlements, but also building safety to make sure that that project can proceed as scheduled. Zoning ordinance updates, still planning for the zoning updates, the Greenway overlay, as well as the M1B updates. And I think the current thinking is that when this plan of recruitment is completed, hopefully, one of those new planners would be able to take those applications and move them forward when they come on board. So we're looking for someone with experience in that kind of action.
Would that exclude the neighborhood meeting on Greenway Downs?
It would. I don't think either of those, I think it makes sense to start with a meeting of some kind for both of those actions, neighborhood meeting for Greenway Downs, and a property owner meeting for the M1B updates. Natural Resources chapter, Housing chapter, those have already been talked about. Demographics chapter, as was mentioned, I think, several meetings ago, there was a small amount of money available in last year's operating budget to kick off this effort. So this is being used as a technical update, but also a community conversation about what's going on with demographics in the city. What are, the first step will be a trends report that should be available late this year, this calendar year. And that'll look at what's going on in terms of the city's population, the city's households, as well as the city's workforce. And it'll be a look at what's going on in the city, and how does that compare to what's going on nationally, as well as regionally. That takes me through the end of the planning report.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's very comprehensive, as I was. All right. Let's then move to the work session on the Mary Riley Styles Public Library renovations. And are you delivering the staff report, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
In the absence of any of our actual current funders, I am here to fill in. So before you tonight, this is a work session for the library. And Jenny Carroll, the city's librarian, is here, as well as the project architect, Mark.
Minetti.
Minetti. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
The, the reason this is coming before you now as a work session, there's been no application filed for the Planning Commission's formal review. Instead, this is an opportunity to orient the Planning Commission on what's happened to date. The library board has been overseeing this project, obviously, from start to current, and they've been looking at various design options and opportunities. The Planning Commission's focus on this is really on the exterior of the project and how it relates to Park Avenue, as well as the rest of the municipal complex. And so the staff report provides background information on the kinds of applications that are likely to happen as part of this, and what the Planning Commission's role will be in doing that. So applications that are likely to occur, variance application for setbacks and parking reduction. 2232 review, this isn't something we talk a lot about in the City Falls Church, mainly because a lot of the applications don't trigger it. 2232 for your information is requirement in state code, and it also carries into city code as well. And the idea is to give some implementation power to the comprehensive plan. And this chapter of the state code stipulates that once a comprehensive plan is adopted, then any park, public building, school, library, as well as changing the orientation of streets, widening, narrowing, vacation of, needs to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and against the comprehensive plan, that unless it's a feature shown on the plan, then it has to go through the Planning Commission to be considered substantially consistent. In this case, the library is a feature shown on the plan, but I did want to make you all aware that that is a review power for this kind of facility. Variants, which I think you all are more familiar with, and then ultimately, a site plan application. There will probably be a number of waivers requested as part of the application, and those will be highlighted, of course, in the staff review when that application comes forward. In terms of staff review comments, there have been some initial comments the planning staff has looked at in terms of how this site relates to Park Avenue and the rest of downtown. And then a projected timeline for the project. Here we are on August 20 with a Planning Commission work session, and then getting to probably DZA action in October on the variance, and then a site plan being filed in January. Is that still the thinking?
Yeah, I think so.
And then looking for a Planning Commission action then in February or March.
On the site plan?
Yes, on the site plan. So with that, I'd actually like to turn it over to Jenny, Mark. I don't know if you all have any materials you want to present, or Planning Commission, if you all have any questions here, if you're looking for more information on the project.
So you, we submitted the presentation.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. They're all loaded on the laptop and mouse there. The laptop and mouse is rigged up to the projector. It is a Mac, so stick to that. Oh, good.
So we're only here to discuss the entrance?
Well, so I think that's where the focus of the conversation with the library board has been, as well as the interior programming. But I think for the Planning Commission, you all have an opportunity to talk about any elements of the site design that you're thinking about.
And we receive this. We have these attachments.
You have these? Okay. So, so part of what I thought I would do, or not, depending as Mr. Stevens has actually seen the presentation, so, so I had presented to, or we had presented to the library board and also to city council, what the library board saw in order to make their recommendation. So if you would like, I can go through that. And that was the attachment one that you all saw, which was the conceptual plans and design options.
Right, there were different.
Say it again?
There were different options.
There were different options. So if I can get this.
Yeah, I think it's helpful if you walk us through what the options were and what the thinking was.
So then we can point, refer to it up on the screen.
I believe the green button will be meant to show you, they're reversed, maybe backwards.
Okay. First hand backwards. Awesome. Okay. So what the library board has been, looking at, have been two different decisions that needed to be made in order to move forward to the schematic design. Currently, we're at 5% of design and looking to move towards schematic design. So the library board met on July 18 after we presented to the city council in a work session, we talked in city council, and then we presented to the library board. Again, they had seen some conceptual designs up till this point. So there were some further refinements made, and then library board discussed. The two decisions to be made was, one, the entrance location, and also the location of children's and adult services. So option one, so the one designates, or two, designates the entrance options. So the one option is the corner entrance, and the two option is the entrance that faces Park Avenue. The A and B are the location of the children's room versus adult services, or the children's and teen room versus adult services. So, and these slides, if they're still in the order that I saw them earlier today, option one is at the beginning and option two is at the end, so I'll have to scroll through to get to option two. So this is option one.
That's a little confusing, yeah.
This is our corner entrance, and really, the, what we're working on now is that, mostly the interior, the functionality and the program, programming of the space and how that works. So really, the exterior perspectives that you're seeing are to give an idea of massing. They're not necessarily descriptive, completely descriptive of what the entrances will look like, because as I said, we're only at 5% of design, and these are really block, block and stocking designs. So.
Can I ask you quickly, before you get off this slide?
Sure.
It strikes me that the electrical pole is right at the entrance.
That's pretty bad.
Okay, so maybe Cindy can speak to that.
And I was curious about the width of the sidewalk as it relates to that staircase. Is that electrical pole, I'm assuming it's not going to be underground, but is that provide, is that a problem for people trying to access the entrance?
So this is.
Just one more quick thing, is there an ADA access here? I don't see it on the schematic.
Yes. And that's why I moved to the second slide. So this is the bird's eye view. So that black dot is the existing electrical pole. And you had asked about spacing. So the total between here, that black dot, and the stairs, that would be about seven feet. And between here and the curb, I guess, backside of curb, I'm not sure if I'm using that term correctly, but that's about eight feet right there. So.
It's split right in the middle.
So it is, it is kind of in the middle right now. And Cindy, we have been discussing both undergrounding as part of the Great Streets program and possibly moving the pole, depending on what the timeframe is for the Great Streets. I will say that currently, so this dotted line is where the current sidewalk is. And I would say, so this is, I said this was eight feet, so right about here, right now, where that X is, that's where you start to see the, there's a brick retaining wall that starts there. So currently, there's only about three and a half to four feet that people have to move. So we would actually be nearly doubling the space that people currently have to move in. So it would go from about three, and actually, we'd be doubling it, about three and a half to four feet to seven feet. This space right here.
But it'll also be the focal point of your entrance way, so that's fundamental difference for what.
Well, it's a little bit offset. This perspective, the way this is, you're a little bit off-center, so it looks maybe a little further in the middle than it really is. But I'll let Cindy talk about the undergrounding decision.
Thank you. Let me give you that update, and then you get back to the designs and the block and concepts. So under our franchise agreement, we have two options to deal with poles. They can move the poles for ADA compliance and just physically move the poles, and that's at no cost to the city. However, that's not the ideal outcome. And so what we've initiated this week with Public Works and myself is putting in a work order to actually get the design and cost implications for the two poles on the library property, but the whole Great Street Park Avenue concept. Under the franchise agreement, we have then two options for undergrounding. One, we bear about two-thirds of the cost, and Dominion does one-third of the cost, all the design, and pull their wires. Or we have another option, which is a benefit where we can do a little bit more turnkey, and we have a set number of circuit feet and dollar amounts where they'll basically do the whole thing. And so we're going to get a cost estimate and then start looking at cost benefit for the city. Park Avenue is such an important street, and we always wanted to prioritize where we use the undergrounding value.
Cindy, you probably know that the last General Assembly, there was legislation passed where Dominion got to a billion dollars that they were going to keep as part of the grid modernization. And part of that bill is to underground, to accelerate that whole process. I just mentioned it, in discussions with them, I want to bring it up and say, here's a place where you could do it pretty quickly, and it would have a lot of benefit.
And we have an advantage, too, of, with the City Hall project, we've undergrounded from Park Avenue down the drive aisle to where it feeds into the West Wing. So before, there was a big, long line to the next pole that was running between the farmhouse and City Hall, right over the DAR garden, and it usually was looking like it was falling down. On Wednesday, those wires are going to be pulled to the new transformers, and so we'll be undergrounded there. And they put a new temporary pole on Park Ave. And they put a new temporary pole on Park Avenue, but the goal, of course, will be to try to underground it. Now, we also are just talking about the electric power utilities. We still need to do with the communication lines, because they are riding on Dominion poles, and we're still going to have to give Verizon and Cox underground. But I just wanted to make sure the planning commission and council knew that we're working to try to underground it, and clearly, that pole is not in the ideal spot. There's also another one that's just off of this, that's between 313 and the library. Top there. So endeavor to get them, plus everything down to the state theater.
Oh, and that whole side?
Yeah, that would be the.
Now, would that mean disruption of all the new sidewalks and all the, or would it be in the street?
For the utilities going to Park Avenue, we've got a grant to try to do the sidewalks. We want to do the utilities first. And once you get past Little Falls and Park, the utility poles actually shift over to the opposite side of the street.
Now where again?
Right after city hall in Little Falls and Park. So right now, they're sort of like on the library side with one pole for city hall, and then instead of being on the Walter Phillips North Side social side, they actually go across the street.
Back over to the, to the Kaiser parking garage side in Park.
So our goal will be to underground. We do have a $2 million smart scale grant in the CIP to be working on, pedestrian, walkability, and ideally, the undergrounding. But the cost of undergrounding, that many blocks, we've got to bring some other resources to the table. And that's what we're working on. But certainly, it's very critical to the library design.
For doing the library, I mean, that would have to be done before you put any extra effort into improving any of the sidewalks around there or anything, or redoing things.
In the ideal, the other option we have is, in the franchise agreement, they have to move the poles for ADA accessibility, and so we could ask them to move them and just leave them in place until we can underground, because you can't just underground the two poles. So we could move them out to the curb line, and then just have a moderate amount of repair.
That decision might delay the library.
We can move the poles without delaying the library if we can't get the undergrounding to align. That would be the ideal, is we do the undergrounding right away instead of having to move the poles and come back later to underground. But both are options that legally we have under the franchise agreement.
Would it be possible to go from this one to the, to the one with the Park Avenue entrance?
Sure, I just wanted to mention.
For a quick comparison or something?
Sure, I can go there. I just wanted to mention just a couple other things. We liked the corner entrance as well because of the connection that it would have to the campus that's across the way, so Cherry Hill Park and city hall over up there. And we also liked the corner entrance for the inside functionality. And I can talk about, more about that when we get to the block plan. The.
And of course, there's no sidewalk over there on Cherry Hill side.
There is a brick pass.
But you have to get the stairs going up to it, don't you?
No stairs.
Is it?
On Cherry Hill, it's, there's a grade.
Yeah, there's a grade.
Okay, so this is the, the center entrance that faces Park and Cherry Hill, with the three archways and the door right in the center. And then this is the bird's eye view. So this places the main entrance here.
I see the part with distribution, staff, yeah?
Say it again?
I can see the difference with, that doesn't give you the area that you got. And the other area for staff coverage of entrances?
Yeah, so this would not have a portico. This is, goes right into a vestibule and then right into the interior of the library. The other, the corner entrance, sorry about that. This would have a portico, and then the vestibule, vestibule, and then the interior of the, of the library. And just so you all know, all this gray area is the current building. The pink area is, would be the addition, expansion. And you had asked, Mr. Woodisco, you had asked about ADA accessibility, and it's right here with the ramp, with a very low grade.
It's not a ramp. It's less than 5% grade, so you will not need a railing there. Just extends the grade to the front entrance. We're falling away at the corner, that's the issue. That's why you need risers at the corner. But the grade where you enter there is almost at the finished floor elevation.
And, and how about the access? I'm looking at the other option two. Looks like maybe there's one or two stairs to get into the entrance, or?
On that one, we would not need any risers on there. We think at this point, looking at the existing circuit.
Sidewalk level?
It's close.
Okay. So what's the advantage of this design, the option two? I heard what the advantage was for option one, but why option two with the entrance in the middle of the block?
I don't find.
Do you want me to talk a little bit about how we got what we got?
Sure, I don't find it as advantageous as the corner entrance, so.
So yeah, why are we, why are we two options? Why are we not?
So we were building upon the original master plan that was completed for the city in 2014. That's where the entrance was shown.
Yeah.
And so we started the process, building upon that, and then we met with the community. One of the first things that members of your community mentioned was, we'd really liked you to look at a corner entrance. We didn't, weren't considering that at all, because that wasn't part of the original master plan. And the key really was, how do you make that? The concern about people crossing over Park Avenue towards the entrance, of course, you have some issues with your grade on the far side.
Right, right.
So it made sense to pull the corner, pull the entrance to the corner as a way to connect your pedestrian paths. And so that started that journey. And then as we developed it, what we realized was there are some real advantages to that corner concept, both functionally. One of the difficulties with the Park Avenue entrance is you really don't get a portico. And you have this beautiful portico where people hang out waiting for the library to open, and you don't have that opportunity off the Park Avenue entrance.
Right.
So there became a lot of advantages to the corner entrance concept as we developed it, that really came to light and.
I can see where it'd be so much better like this for the staff.
Well, it also, it also connects, you know, your history is that the entrance was off of Northern Virginia Avenue.
Right, right.
And it's really close to the corner. It's not, it's not symmetrical along Northern Virginia. It's very close to the corner. And so putting it around the corner on Park Avenue was really to change the historical point in which you entered the building. While the corner entrance begins to anchor that composition, allows you to see the entrance from both Park Avenue and Northern Virginia. So there's a lot of advantages.
And I would say the other advantage as well is the interior staircase, so.
And the elevator, right there?
And the elevator. Well, the interior staircase would be here in the corner entrance with those three arched windows, which would provide natural light that hopefully would communicate to the lower level as well. The, here on the portico, what we saw is an advantage for staff, and you can actually see it better in, in this one. This, so this is children's on the lower level and adult services on the upper level. This is the corner entrance with the portico, and then that green area is where the circulation staff office would happen and a, an interior, or, I'm sorry, an exterior book drop could happen right here under the portico. Currently, we have an exterior book drop that is located under the portico. And then you could also have an interior book drop that would go right into where the circulation staff is, is working. Currently, it's a closet, so staff has to go, leave the circulation staff area and the staging area to go to the closet to pick up books and then back and forth.
Let me ask two quick questions.
Sure.
The first is, going back to the, the outside, the rendering, with the option one, the, the portico.
This one?
The first slide.
That one?
Yeah, so what's happening at these archways? Am I looking at like a stairway railing inside that I see these, you know, these bars that I'm looking at, or?
Yeah, and I, once again, I wouldn't get too, too terribly hung up on, on, on the outside right now, just because we're still at 5% of design.
Well, one, you're seeing a level of fine-tuning. But you're seeing a level of transparency that you're probably, you're seeing into the building.
Yeah.
That's the railing inside of it.
For the stairway.
For the stairway down to the lower level. So these aren't exterior railings that you're seeing. You're just seeing transparency through those windows into that stairway.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I feel like I was clarifying that, I could tell. This is still, I think, a visual focal point, and I'm not sure how we have to handle that staircase, if that's what it is, but that, even on the rendering, is optically unpleasant to me. But maybe that's just some, you know, window treatments that solve that problem with.
Well, we didn't spend a whole lot of time, you know, detailing the railings at this point on the inside of the building.
No.
But yes, those are, there's a level of, there's a level of detail that we'll definitely look at. I'm guessing the lighting is such that we can actually see it.
Perhaps, perhaps, it was just an unusual.
You would probably see it at night when it's illuminated from the inside, but not during, but not during the day. And, you know, I, I think there's a level of articulation. The other, you know, one of the things that you're not seeing is that typically, the colonial windows had muttons on them. So we're really not showing the treatments of those windows and how they'll actually be developed. There's quite a bit of support among various groups within the community, and it's also a requirement indeed that we maintain the language of the colonial architecture. So you're not going to see large storefront. They're going to be smaller.
Right, right.
Whether it's simulated true divided or true divided lights, that's really the planning commission's and the BAR's direction on that. But it'll, it will probably look quite a bit different than that in terms of the scale of those windows. But the arched openings, the three arches are very important. They're, they're significant because it really is, well, it's your logo for your library. So trying to key in on that element is very important.
So for the, just general discussion, you are presenting us with option two simply out of historical precedent of that being what was presented a year or so ago? But the, inside the library board, there is limited support for this option?
No, the library board, the recommendation for the library board, from the library board, was the corner entrance and children's located on the lower level. So that is option.
One B.
One B.
That's what you said, right there.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But you, you get to see the whole. We didn't just give you what was represented. We gave you all the options.
But this is the strong preference from those on the board.
Yes, for the corner entrance, it was four, for it, and two for the Park Avenue entrance. And then for children's on the lower level, it was five for children on the lower level and one for not. And Mr. Jernan, who is here tonight, he's the chair of the board. He wasn't there, but his preferences for the corner and children's on the lower level as well.
All right, so that's option one B.
Yes.
And that's what you were in the process of explaining when I interrupted. Right?
So could we go to that part of it?
Who's on it?
I'm on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That one.
All right, please continue, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. So the, then the other two decisions, this is the existing conditions. This is what the library currently looks like. With the upper level is on the right-hand side, and the lower level is on the left-hand side. And the same colors, so the, the light purple is, is adult services, and the blue, almost ultramarine, marine blue is children's services. And the aqua is teen services as well. So, okay.
Yeah, am I interrupting again? Just curious what the thinking was as a frequent patron of this library. The children's area is, I think, one of the highlights, and the lighting, and that, you know, those steps there that not only provide like some sort of stage kind of area, but also just a place to sit and do puzzles with your children.
Yeah.
So if there was a overwhelming majority to move it to the lower level, what was the rationale for that?
So there were a couple of reasons. If you look at, so the current children's library is about 1,900 square feet. The children's library, if it was on the upper level, would be around approximately 4,000 square feet. If it is on the lower level, it is 5,000 square feet, approximately. So that was one of the big themes that came out of the visioning sessions that we did in January, was space and public space. That came from the public, that came from the staff, that the library and the library board, that everybody wanted to see more space, and also more space for the children's room. As you can see, in the current, we are, we are cramped in the children's library currently. And currently, storytime happens right, not there. Sorry.
Yeah, right.
Right about here-ish.
Yeah, yeah.
So we fit about 150 to 200 people, and adults and children in that space. And so there had been lots of discussion, both with staff and with the public, about a meeting room that, in which we could hold programming that was sufficient size that we could hold a larger storytime in that area. So with the children's room on the lower level, the meeting room, we actually have several meeting rooms depicted, but this meeting room would in all likelihood be a larger storytime area. And provide, take that storytime out of the general area where other things could be happening. So some of the feedback we heard from patron, patrons were, you know, when stories time is happening, not much else can happen in the children's library. Like, it's very difficult to go in there and get a book or just sit in the window seat and be quiet. It's not quiet during storytime. So this would provide sufficient enough space to, to talk about zoning for children and for teens. So there could be a preschool zone, there could be a school age zone, there could be a tween zone, and then of course, the teen library. So that was another attractive part of having so much space for the children's and the teen area. And I will note that there are windows, would be windows all along here and all along here.
Can, can I stop you and ask where the fire doors are?
Right here.
Where?
Right there where it says vest, vestibule.
Uh-huh.
So there would be a fire door here. There is a current fire door right here. And currently, there's a, there, you know, we have a fire door downstairs right now, that's right behind the reference desk. So we would have a fire door here. And then, of course, there's another exit possibility here as well.
On the stairs. But there's no direct fire door exit from the children's.
Right there.
Yeah, oh yeah, but.
No, it's, yeah, that's a fire exit, and it's right on grade. It goes right outside. So on the upper level, on the children's library, the, the only exit out of the children's room, a fire exit, is down these stairs and out the back door. And then, of course, out the front door. We heard from, we staffed this as well with Chief Mary Gavin and Fire Marshal Tom Polera. And their preference is to have children's located on the lower level, not just for those man-made and natural disasters, but also for general safety as well. And that would be my concern as well. We, you know, man, natural disasters, we have had some. There's been some hurricanes and tornadoes, but they're few and far between. And man-made disasters, hopefully, we will never have to, to deal with that. But the general safety and security of children, so, you know, daily or weekly occurrence of people currently now can walk through the children's room. Let's see. Yep. They can walk through the children's room in order to get to the toilets. So they walk through here all the time. And we do have some surveillance on people who are doing that. But both Chief Gavin, Chief Gavin felt that in this situation, in the children's library, you're dividing purpose. There's a division of purpose. So you have adults all on one floor, and you have children and teens all on the other floor. So if somebody comes downstairs who may be sort of out of place, as Chief Gavin said, she said, well, what we say is, what are you doing here? And I said to Chief Gavin, I said, well, we, we phrase it a little more kindly. We say, how may I help you? And can I find, help you find anything in the children's room? So there would almost, there would be a natural surveillance in a children's area, we would lower the shelving. So I know people, it's hard for people to visualize currently because downstairs, all of the shelving units are very, very tall, and the ceiling is low. So with a children's library, with the shelving. So with a children's library, with the shelving units would probably be somewhere between two and four feet.
Four feet, right, right.
So considerably lower.
Right.
And so that would give the opportunity for staff and for parents and caregivers to naturally surveil the area. You can see, you know, throughout.
That's what we've got in the school libraries, yeah.
And the larger 5,000 square feet allow you to have lower shelves.
But I've got a couple of other questions on that, because I am.
Is this called structural?
So it is structural, that's the exterior of the building right now. And we would talk about like where we would make.
Well, we were talking about that in our kickoff. So basically from, the meeting room will most likely be located where it's shown and it's because there's no opportunity for natural light at that level there. So it makes sense, that's where your meeting room is. About from the yellow, where the yellow stops over, we're going to remove that portion of the wall. So we'll structurally reinforce it with steel beams. And the idea is to get as much natural light deep into that level as we can. Your opportunity for daylight, you actually have a southern exposure along your alleyway, right there, yep. And we, we want to get as much light through that southern exposure. And the nice thing is there's no building blocking you there, you know, the building's actually further in.
Now, there could be changes in that sometimes.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Possible.
That's the doctor's office there and they've been offering it up for sale.
The doctor's office?
No, it's actually like a catering firm.
Okay.
This is, this is the, on this side is where 313 Park is and that's a, that's a medical building.
Is that an historic building on the same side?
That's right next door, I don't know, it's old, I don't know how historic you would consider it. I think it was built in 1940.
Okay, but I've got some real, I'm, I'm stretching back to my motherhood and my grandmotherhood. A couple of things. At, now if you've got small babies, can they remain in their strollers during sleeping time, during the older kids' storytime? You know, if they have a younger baby, can they stay in their stroller and be brought in? Or no strollers at all?
Currently, we prefer the strollers don't come into the storytime space just because we're so packed in here.
Packed, right, right, right.
And the strollers take up a considerable amount of space, so.
So I was just wondering, you know, about the, you know, the families with the smaller ones.
So this might, so this will provide some more opportunities for stroller parking and, and that larger item storage while you're using the library. So some stroller parking is indicated here, S T R O L, and that would be in the vestibule. But really, I mean, 5,000 square feet, so you're nearly tripling what we currently have. So I feel like there's plenty of opportunities as, for us to find parking for strollers, both within, you know, the, the storytime room and without.
Because I'm just looking for some, there's, there's something I really don't care for about children being downstairs. There's no natural light, some kids are terrified of an elevator. And so moms would be trucking down kids and everything.
We have not found any of our children to be terrified of the elevator.
I, I've known quite a few at different stages of their world who can be terrified of going into something and having the doors closed. I'm just saying, I really, I'm concerned about safety and, you know, of them, but I also, I'm just concerned there's no light down there, there's no, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm having a real hard problem with it. I know I probably won't have anything to do with it or anything, so I'm just expressing my own opinion, that's all I'm doing.
So I don't know quite how to get to the, can I go to the internet?
Uh, that may or may not be available on that machine.
Okay, so if you go to falsterba.gov and then backslash library project, and we've uploaded some slides.
Oh, I have, I've looked at it, sure, sure. Oh yeah, it's very pretty and, you know, you know, we saw a big change when TJ did their remodeling of their library, which is what, not a big deal, but you know, it's, lots of changes took place there. But I just, I just, I, I just, I'm just saying, so there's no reason to have to talk me into it, so we're out of it. That's just my opinion and, you know, just, I don't know.
And others have been, have expressed concern over that. And I would say, so there have been, how people have been talking about it, about it being the basement and dank and underground.
That, that part I don't see at all, okay? I have no problem with that part.
We would make it a wonderful space.
Right, but I just have problems with mothers lugging a couple of kids down the stairway or, you know, into the li, into a smaller elevator and having that many people get in and out at a certain time.
We've actually.
With the elevator, you know, capacity way and how, you know, how they would get down there or not have to wait. And, you know, it's just not a free, easy, "Hey, I'm here," you know, feeling. Which I kind of like the "Hey, I'm here" feeling of, of, you know, the space. If the space upstairs could be expanded anymore and maybe put, I know the teen section was, you know, put back in there. That doesn't even seem big enough for teens. But I, you know, I, I'm just expressing it, that's all, you know, and we don't have to pound it to death.
And I don't have strong opinions on this, I'm kind of happy to leave, leave it to those that have a lot more experience. But I was careful when I was on vacation to look at the library in Camden, Maine. I'm actually, it was just a wonderful library. And they had the adults in the upper level and children's was in the lower level with the lower shelves and it really seemed to work very well. So it's active, but I'll share that.
I'll share mine, my family moved into the city in the early 60s and we were walking mom and three daughters to the library every week because we could just ferociously read. And we loved the fact that we could be trusted downstairs while moms could go upstairs and look for the books that they wanted.
So the children's was on the lower level and it was, it was, I've seen, I've seen some documentation.
This library?
It wa, yeah, one way it was.
Mary Riley had the children, oh wow.
Oh yeah.
Things have changed around often, on quite often. Now, I don't remember that part, because I always, well, did the children's library just go up there when they put the semicircle on?
Put the, I believe when they, when they did the 1992.
Yeah, right, right, that's probably when it changed. The other, other thing is how wide is the fire door down there? I, I'm worried about kids getting out.
Getting out of the fire door?
Yeah, if there's, yeah, if you have, I mean, you got the fire door.
Well, it would, it would be 30 minutes.
There and, and somewhere up there, which looks like it'd be pretty hard to get to.
Do you mean you're worried they won't be able to get out during an emergency? Or they will get out, whether there's an emergency or not?
Might not be able to with a whole bunch of crowd, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, okay.
Once again, these are, these are just blocking and stacking plans, so they're not.
I'm just, I'm ju, and I'm not going to say anything more, I just, I just have problems thinking of it. It's, you know, with, through my experience with my kids and everything like that, but that's all. Not going to make a big difference in the world.
Hard expectation is that the fire exits meet.
Huh?
At a minimum, yes.
And the elevator, we have talked about making an elevator big enough to hold multiple strollers. We have an elevator that's right there, we would maintain that elevator.
Are you keeping that one too?
It's, yeah, it's too cost prohibitive to take out. So we would maintain that elevator as long as we could, so we'd have two elevators. And I would actually, you know, this, the entrance is right here. And to get onto the elevator and go right downstairs and then go right here into the children's area. And then this stairwell, of course, would be wider. Our current stairwell is in the center, right here.
Right, right.
And it is not large enough for two people to pass each other.
Right, it's small.
So we would, we would increase that, that stairwell.
Okay, I'm just saying, it would not keep me from voting against it or anything, I'm just expressing my concern, okay? That's all.
Yep.
I'll be happy to go whichever way people really want to have it.
Some of the things the planning commission will be asked to, to act on are the exterior of the building. Can you talk a little bit to the dimensions you've got on sidewalks in terms of sidewalk width, number of plantings?
So the sidewalk width would be 14 feet.
The inside face of curb.
From what he said, inside face of curb, so here. And then this one, so this is 14 feet from here to the building on the corner. And nine feet between here and the, that slight incline, the grade.
Right.
And then these parking spaces, I think it's on here, having at least two ADA parking spaces here. So the planters were not included on this space to accommodate the ADA spaces. And then these are actually, these are the planters that are indicated that are part of this streetscape plan. So, and then this is, so these are.
And Kim and I were talking about, we may want to, to depress that whole curb.
Oh, right.
If all I'm saying, to, to drop that six inches.
From, from here to here, depress that curb.
Because that's where your ADA parking is.
Hmm, how many of those spaces, it looks like there are one, two, three, four, five marked spaces along Park Avenue?
Two of them currently are ADA.
We have, we actually only have three spaces that are currently on Park Avenue, two are ADA accessible and one is just a regular parking space. So we would actually increase them.
So what sort of variances will we be asked to consider?
So I would, we, it's a, it's a variance for the setback on the.
Northern Virginia Avenue.
On Northern Virginia Avenue. Safety.
Yeah, I was just agreeing with.
Oh, okay, yeah. And then the max lot coverage, I think is the other one.
You're going to have more than 35%.
Yes, we would be at approximately 56%.
I did have a question on that. The, one of the reasons for having the 35% of course relates to stormwater and the ability of a lot to absorb rain. But I'm just wondering, will the end results of the project still be an improvement overall in terms of stormwater quantity and quality, less phosphorus, less runoff?
Well, our first meeting for schematic design phase is to set up a civil engineer to talk to your site plan approval folks and talk to your MSF core requirements and what we're going to actually be doing in, in order to remove phosphates, whether it's probably, we're not going to probably, we're probably not going to be able to infiltrate there's not enough area.
Right, what I was after is just, you know, I recognize the constraints as to why the variance has to be asked. I'm just wondering, in general, will the end result be a better stormwater situation than what's current there? Both in terms of quantity and quality?
I don't think they're doing any treatment currently, because it was, it doesn't need to be that hard.
Right, right.
So we've had to improve on that, right?
I think if we can say that it's going to be better after the, you know, that that will assist in, in the logic towards the variance.
Mm-hmm.
And just as frame of rest, for instance, the existing lot coverage is 41.6% and that variance was approved in 1991. And I think those are all of them.
So we need to look at exterior, Paul, or who said that?
That was Paul, but. Yeah, I mean, the site design and the site characteristics are, are a lot of what falls into the purview of the, the planning commission at the site plan phase.
So this.
So this is an early opportunity for you all to provide feedback and comment on things like sidewalk width, number of plantings, facing to the street orientation.
And when we came in November, I believe we had talked about the, the setback and that. So it's 14 feet, so this space between the building and the plantings is eight feet and then six feet for the plantings.
So it was eight feet clear along the Virginia Avenue side.
Right, right there, yeah. And then also this additional buffer to the street of the parking here and the parking on this side.
And Kim wanted me to mention, I think there's two streetscape concepts and we would like to use the, the planters that are flush, we don't want to use the raised ones.
Right. Old strollers, I guess.
Uh-huh, okay, going to have some problem with tree commission, but we've had it ongoing about that.
Is that for the root falls anymore?
Actually, the, the argument for the raised edges is to keep the salts out.
Ah, I know.
And to protect the trees more.
Try to get them using that kind of salt.
Are they using salts on the pavers?
It shouldn't be. Hopefully the city is not, it becomes more of an issue on the commercial property where it's harder to control that.
And we've had some approved with the flat.
I know you guys, you guys do that.
Right.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be a issue then.
Do you guys have any comments on the setbacks or the exterior?
Trying to recall whether, when we did the streetscape design, whether it included deep streets or not. Now, we were mainly focused on Washington and, and Broad, did we extend that into this area?
We did, the streetscape standards, I was just looking them up, they call for a 16-foot setback on both Virginia and Park Avenue.
So there'd be a variance for most of the calls.
Well, the streetscape standards are adopted by resolution, not ordinance, so they're, they're a policy, not a, not a law.
But if we don't do it on our buildings, then we have difficulty saying other commercial buildings, this is what you must do because that's what we say we're going to do. So that's a problem. But I know you need the interior space, you know, for the extension of the library, particularly if going out to the west side for the addition.
And I think when we had come in November, the feedback from planning commission was at least 12 feet. So we made it 14.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I know that on the major thoroughfares, we ask for 20. And, but in some, some cases, like this building right here, I think it's 14 specifically. So it's not unprecedented. This is a, you know, to me, a unique building in terms of its traffic and usage in the city and I, I don't have a problem. In terms of the architecture and how it lays out, I think this option one is better, with the exception of that pole right at the entrance.
Yeah, man, is that ugly.
And I think it just looks more appealing even without the actual functional benefit. So I, I don't foresee any problems, I mean, the variance of the, the lot coverage, again, we were in excess of it before, it's exceeded it. I'd like to hear what other commissioners say when they, when they show up. But, and my apologies that we don't have a full audience for you this evening. But I don't have any of these, these problems, I mean, I'll just speak to my, for myself, I have some just general bias towards wanting this building to work as, function as best as it possibly can. And as a result, I think being a little lax on some of these requirements makes sense for the community as a whole. And I think there is real justification from a city standpoint and potentially even a comprehensive plan standpoint. So I think this is just a better design and I like the thought that's gone into the functionality so far. Just even detailed by what you talked about in terms of the children's space on the bottom and that how you, you know, as a board have thought through that. So those things make sense and I certainly wouldn't pretend to tell you how to utilize the space, but I like the thought that's going into it and how it'll benefit the community as a whole. So I don't see a problem from myself in terms of the setbacks and the lot coverage. I think Mr. Stevens makes a good point that we should at least maintain, if not improve, the stormwater elements. I think that's a fair requirement. If you're going to increase the coverage and want a variance on that, that you should at least be able to meet what is a fairly low standard already, no treatment, and increase it in some ways, whether it's through rain barrels or some other methodology that doesn't require a lot of space. I think that's a reasonable request. And the update from the semester on the pole is encouraging because that's, that's a big hang up there.
For the whole Park Avenue. Could we see the exterior on the Northern Virginia? We saw the kind of more the Park Avenue exterior, yeah.
I'm sorry, you want the corner?
Yeah, the ex.
There's some elevations.
That one?
Yeah, well, doesn't show. Yeah, well, doesn't show much, but I guess, okay, I mean, doesn't show much.
I think there was another one that turned the corner a little bit more, were they in that?
They're not in, in this current one.
Okay.
The elevation prepared.
Was following through with the curved windows and everything like that.
Yeah, on that side.
So we can't really see, there are nice little ghost trees there.
Um, thoughts on materiality, we're thinking in terms of trying to match materials where possible, but obviously bricks don't. Try and find as close a brick match as we can, it won't be identical, um, and with respect to the shingles. I mean, uh, do we have, uh, the ability to look at simulated products? Is this more of a conversation for the board of architectural in terms of materiality?
No, we get involved with the materials as well.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Honestly, I assumed that we were gonna do our best to match the bricks, I understand the limitations, the building's old, it's gonna look like an addition for a little while. And at some point, it will, you know, blend into the, the, the general sort of outward appearance or patina of the, uh, the brick. The shingles, uh, I would be, I guess somewhat more interested in how that matches the roof, not so much from a color standpoint, but from a material standpoint. And I guess I don't even underst- know what the materials are currently and what you're proposing, so, uh, what was the, what's?
Slate?
It's slate, so is the, the, uh, objective to use synthetic material, does it look like slate or?
We'd just like to know what our options are, the reality is the synthetics may not be cheaper than slate. We just wanna get a feel of what the expectations are. We, we noted that in nineteen eighty, they put wood, wood windows in the addition. And, um, I just kinda shake my head at that, cause it's a maintenance heavy product.
Right.
And are we gonna be asked to do something similar to that, uh, but at this time?
No, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be my request, I mean, our practically, practical usage, but, uh, people may have, people may have very strong opinions about the roof, I suspect.
It's obviously would be for somebody who doesn't have wood on their house.
And I know that true divided, like, uh, true divided windows are more expensive than the fake ones. But they, true divided look so much better.
You can get the simulated true that have the mutton and the, uh, intermediate, um, airspace as well and then the out, out, the exterior and the interior ones. Or you can just, there's all kinds of different types.
Yeah, yeah.
We can bring samples, I'm sure you all have seen them, probably, in your times on the planning commission, but.
Yeah, the true, true divided ones are just so gorgeous there, but they're expensive, but they're just beautiful.
Just one other thing that I'd like to see when you have it is the pro forma, uh, lead score sheet, do you have a first cut at it?
Oh, we have one.
Oh, you have one?
Would you like us to, to mail it to Paul?
What was that, the lead?
Yeah, if you send it to me, I can go.
It's pro forma, this point, I present it.
Well, just so we're, we're, we're still looking at, the, the city has not made a decision on whether they're gonna register the building. We have been directed to design the building for the standard and we've had conversations.
For which level?
So.
So we're okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's, uh, version four, right?
It is, which makes it harder.
Yeah.
So, uh, you're right on the borderline of the transportation credit, a location of your front door.
Oh, okay.
So, um.
Bike racks.
Yeah, it makes a big difference. Well, bike racks are, you know, we're not gonna put a shower facility in for bike racks, so what about that? But, um, you know, we, we don't have the direction from the city to register it. If it's the planning commission's desire to see registered buildings, I have to voice that with the city as well, because there is cost involved in doing that.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And, uh, we are doing just about everything else, cause we have to commission it, we have to model it, and that's for us to be able to certify.
Right.
There's already a, a lot of money that's built into that process, so going the extra leg.
The commission, just keep it here.
Well, the commissioning is definite.
Right, right, absolutely.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
We seem to have our support for this, uh, option.
Yeah, I like the corner.
It's okay. I know that this is a work session, but did you want to?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna do that right now. Uh, typically, we do not let your public comment during work session, but, uh, keep in the situation and, uh, we did not ask for public comment earlier in the meeting. I'm gonna ma- let Mr. Ross speak, uh, if you wanna come up, you state your name and address.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, normally I'll be at one of the chairs here. And the mics are already on, so just be free.
Sure, hi, my name is David Ross, uh, I'm here with my sons who are here, uh, learning about the community government process. And, uh, I was only prompted to speak based on your, uh, presentation, it's a wonderful start for the new library. I just wanted to offer, you know, one citizen's perspective, that the, uh, the real trademark or logo for the library is that bay window. Yeah, I think all the parents really think about that space and they go there with their kids and they think about that space. And I would just respectfully suggest that when you're looking at the layout of the, the children's spaces, that you consider extending that bay window down to the lower level as well. That's a beautiful southeastern exposure with the morning sun coming through and I think, uh, that would be a wonderful space to recreate in the new design if at all possible.
It's an interesting idea.
Well, that is, that has actually been talked about many times, so.
I mean, that would add natural light.
The, the question really becomes a matter of functionality and whether we can do similar things to the seagull treatment, with groupable furniture. But the, the window juxtaposition, the light, definitely makes a case of.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your comment and, uh, they picked an exciting meeting to learn about public. Um, all right, uh, actually, the next item on the agenda is City Hall, but, um, Ms. Master, before we do that, I, I was remiss and I did not open the meeting to public comment. On items not on the agenda and I think we do have someone in the audience who may wanna speak to that. So I wanna at least open it up to the public, um, to talk about something not on the agenda, for example, Founder's Row. But, uh, if no one wants to speak on that, we will.
Right, yeah.
Yes, I assumed as much.
Roheeny Winters, three twenty-four Grove Avenue. Um, I'd like to comment relative to Founder's Row, but, um, this is more, I would like you to consider this as a citizen petition for the current residents of Grove and the West End. As a present matter versus when Founder's Row becomes approved or, or whatnot. Um, we have an existing unmarked crosswalk from the sidewalk from Grove Avenue across to West Street where the seven eleven is. And we have another existing unmarked crosswalk on the other side from the Wells Fargo Bank side. And both of those sidewalks have stroller or wheelchair ramps to, to exit the sidewalk there, to either cross Grove or to cross West Street. None of it is marked. So my request is that, as you look at the site plan for Founder's Row, if you're not able to, um, activate a, a citizen, um, request to mark a crosswalk to enhance safety there now. To ask the developer to go ahead and plan for that marking, because we know the traffic will increase. And to have an unmarked crosswalk there is, some would say unsafe now, but at most times of the day, you can wait for no traffic. You can clear from both directions, easy line of sight and you can cross there legally, according to the Virginia Vehicle Code, um, in that unmarked crossing. I would like it to be marked to alert cars that there are pedestrians in the area. Um, there's one small sign that says do not block the intersection, but the intersection's not well-marked and there's no, there's no crosswalk marked. So, um, my request tonight is to look at that from a different perspective than a Founder's Row road improvement and from a pedestrian safety now. For anybody on foot, wheelchair or, um, uh, with a stroller or without, to be able to cross there. I know during construction, we'll probably have construction fencing and all and people won't need to cross there. But once Founder's Row does come, if cars are used to seeing the marked crosswalk, um, then the pedestrian lane that comes in where Sunoco and seven eleven meet now. That will be an enhancement that's already, people are already used to and so it might not seem as, as drastic a change. Since we already have the extension of the road at that T intersection is a, is considered an unmarked crosswalk today.
So let me ask you, we've, there's been extensive, and I mean extensive conversation about that intersection and how the pedestrians and the, uh, vehicles will interact in that space. So I believe, uh, I think the solution is actually still being determined because of the complexities about distance from the light and speeds and turns and visibility. Again, this is not an, uh, this is not an insignificant issue and one that the engineer, the city engineer has weighed in on, along with numerous residents. Uh, but I wanna understand, are you, cause I think it'll be addressed, so whatever the solution will be, it has to deal with the safety process that goes, that's gonna go on through this site plan review. But are you asking specifically for during construction to have something as, as notifying people or just that we consider this? Cause if the, the second, the latter, we are certainly dealing with it.
I know you're considering it, but I also know that council, um, approved in the amendment, they approved a set of voluntary concessions that included monies. For a study and consideration of marking the crosswalk after development is constructed, after the project is complete. And for me and a lot of my neighbors, we think that between now and when construction starts, whether it be November or January on that part of the, of the parcels. At least through, you know, as far as we're concerned, through September, when the seven eleven is probably gonna see a lot of last minute frequent visits.
Frequent fires.
That that, that crosswalk should be marked. Um, what you have today is a T intersection with speeds less than thirty-five miles an hour, the limit is twenty-five. And it's a candidate per the VDOT, new two thousand sixteen policy on crosswalks, it is a candidate for marking, for increased safety. It's not a candidate for controlled signal or anything else by their current matrix, other than if a traffic engineer thought that it, it needed because of high volume or something like that. It doesn't come up in, as a candidate for marking with more than just a striped marking.
So, so let me make sure I understand which intersection we're talking about. It's the Grove, um, intersection that connects to the lot where the seven eleven is.
Mm-hmm.
Cause you mentioned two, you want, mentioned one on the Wells Fargo side.
The Wells Fargo to the seven eleven.
The one we are discussing, the wall, the extensive discussion is from Grove to that existing lot.
Right, both sides of Grove have sidewalk with stroller and, and wheelchair ramp downs. Nothing connects it on Grove, other than if you come back into Grove into the Parkland Authority where the bike crossing is.
Sure.
That's the only marked crosswalk to cross Grove. Right now, there's two lines that, that cross Grove, West Street over to the seven eleven side.
Right.
That are not marked, they're just the corners of Grove Avenue where the sidewalk ends.
Okay, my follow.
So if you walk to the ATM, theoretically, you could walk over to shop at, to get your seven eleven. Or if you come down the sidewalk from Metro down Grove, you could cross to the seven eleven and visit.
There's a, there's an ability to walk from Wells Fargo to the seven eleven through.
Across West Street?
Yeah.
Through, uh, ramped, uh?
There's a ramp right there on the corner. It come, it's, it's directed towards Grove, but that's where you would come off it.
It's directed towards.
So that is where we're proposing the alternate Founder's Row, put the marked crosswalk on that side. Because there's less of a curve in the road from the Broad Street side, if visibility was truly an issue. We think the visibility on the plan as drawn by Founder's Row was that they moved the crosswalk not from the sidewalk of Grove, but even farther up West Street, away from the pedestrian lane. I don't think you're looking at their most current, but I don't really recognize.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at Google Maps satellite, the.
At City Hall.
But if, okay, but if they move the, if they use the alternate crosswalk from the Wells Fargo side and just connected it to the, the Grove Avenue sidewalk. It only wraps from Wells Fargo, it wraps slightly around to the Parkland Authority land and then it stops. And if you wanted to continue up Grove, you're supposed to use the crosswalk of the park to get across Grove and then go up the sidewalk, cause there's no cross, there's no sidewalk on the west side of Grove.
However, once they do start construction, the fences will be up and there'll be nowhere to cross to there at all.
When they start, when they start.
No reason to go across there.
There will be no reason to go there.
Right.
I agree.
Yeah.
But there's still a crosswalk from one side of a T intersection to the other, shortest distance to the other sidewalk. So while that sidewalk is closed perhaps, we haven't seen the construction plan. So when the, when that sidewalk is closed in front of Sunoco and seven eleven, I agree, it wouldn't make sense to cross to it. Unless, unless you're parking at the Rite Aid and you walk to work, because you work on that site. Then maybe you'll cross on that side of the road on Broad, but if you wa- if you park or you Metro to work, to work on that site, you might come walking down Grove Avenue to get to your work site.
Could we have staff just look into that?
I think that is what's gonna occur.
Yes, right.
There were three crosswalks, two were settled, this one that we're talking about was unsettled.
I know.
But the money is in there, the developer was happy to pay for it and to tell us what to do, so I think it's in the city's hands now to take it together.
Right, right.
Right, my understanding is from, from a Founder's Row perspective, if they're paying for whatever crosswalk gets decided, it may be well after the construction.
Right, that's what I thought too.
My request is that it be decided upfront so that everybody knows where it's gonna end up, so that they don't block it with construction, other construction. With trees, with other things that will make line of sight issues problematic afterwards, rather than knowing now that there's a crosswalk there. I wouldn't recommend putting it inside the Wells Fargo mid-block, because you have another intersection where you have an unmarked crosswalk. You can't avoid that, according to Virginia Vehicle Code. There is an unmarked crosswalk at Grove, no matter what. If you want people to cross on one side of Grove or the other, you should mark it, because you might have both residents from Grove using the sidewalk, crossing there. Or you might have people on the Wells Fargo side crossing there, because they like that spot better. Um, if you mark one of them, you might have more people choosing that one than the other.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, uh, are there any other speakers on topics not on the agenda? All right, well then, I will close that item which I mistakenly sped through in the beginning of the meeting. All right, Ms. Master, thank you for your patience.
Next.
This was a longer session than I suspected before we got to you, but, uh, I am looking forward to hearing all about City Hall.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity and the last add to your agenda, so I'm pleased to be able to wait until this opportunity. Um, my focus tonight is mostly on a specific ask related to the site plan, uh, but certainly glad after to do any updates. Um, we have recently put out a short, uh, video, it gives a little exterior walking tour and a little sense of the inside and we're working on a follow-up one. I do have some pictures with me tonight, uh, that would show you some of the interior if, uh, planning commission wanted an update of that since.
Yeah, you did a good job on that.
We're serving our task force. Uh, but let me start with the specific situation that I wanted to bring, um, to the commission's attention this evening. And this has been, um, a conversation that we've had with the planning director and kind enough to get us on today. This is a live, um, construction issue that we're dealing with. So what I have up on the screen right now, and let me just say what you have before you as well. I've given you copies on page, uh, one and two of the approved site plan and then page three and four are some proposed changes we'd like to draw your attention to. And five and six is the planting, approved planting plans, so if we needed any attention to those details, we have them before us. Um, and the situation that we have before us tonight is a need to relocate the handicapped parking spots that would be in the front of City Hall. That results in a change to where the ramps are. The ramps and the plaza in front of City Hall are what's within the site plan and the line of disturbance. And so in working with Mr. Stoddard, we wanted to bring this to the planning commission's, uh, attention.
Can you say that last sentence one more time? What's, what's in the, what's the problem here?
Okay, so let me. Okay, so let me, can I just orient you to this and I'll go to the proposed one?
Please.
So the approved site plan's on the screen right now. This is where the flags are here. This is the front of City Hall. This is the west wing doors, east wings. This will be the new ramp. This is the planter boxes in the white.
Yep.
And this is a storm drainage here. Right now, the handicap parking, two are at the west wing and two are at the east wing. They do not have the proper, once we're out on site with the surveying cross slope, so we can't get ADA compliance at that location for the handicap parking. So what we want to do is move the handicap parking, what we need to do to get to grade slope is to move it here in the center. That actually brings you closer to the ramp.
I can see like much of the problem.
So from the ADA coordinator's perspective, it's a good location. It does require relocating and restriping. Instead of doing curb cuts on the east and west wing, we do them in the center. And if you wanted to see where that handicap parking layout is, because it's not on that description, it would be on page four of the sheet handout I gave you.
That's five.
So in doing.
Page four, okay.
The ramps in the center.
Yeah.
You can see, we'll still have the same number of parking spots and van aisles, so we're just relocating them to the center and doing standard parking on the wings. This dotted area is official ADA route to make sure we have the width. In order to get in the trashcans and recyclers and have that width, our civil engineers, Walter Phillips, have proposed moving the planter boxes towards the wings. So here they are currently more center, and I'll call your attention, this square here is George Mason statue coming back. And so they're a little more center. And in this, we've moved west and east to open up the plaza area. This box here is the storm scepter where the two planter boxes drain into. If the trashcan and recycle bins are here, it makes this planter box need to be smaller. So in this case, they're 20 foot by six feet. In this, they're 12 by six. And on page six of the legal size sheet, you can see the impact to the plantings. Instead of four ArborVida trees, it would be two, one in each planter box. The yellow highlight is what's changed.
Oh, there you go.
The twig logwoods would go from 18 to 12, so a reduction of four. The ink berries would go from 32 to 24, that would be a reduction of eight. And the black-eyed Susans go from 86 to 66. From keeping the view shed at City Hall, we'll have fewer trees, but it is reducing the planting areas. This distance from the building and the ramps remain unchanged. We keep the stairs open and the ramping for coming into the building would have come from east or west, and so you still have the same access to the ramp entrance, it just would be from the center if you were in the handicap parking.
So follow, follow from the parking spot to where a person would be getting out of their car and going to the ramp?
So they'd be parking here and you have a van aisle here, for example, so they would come out of the car, up the ramp, and this dotted square is your.
Okay.
Official five-foot width to it. This whole area here is still brick paper. This is brick paper and this is brick paper, so this whole area really is open.
So it'd be a bigger, it'd be a bigger plaza.
But it opens up the middle.
It opens up the middle. Here, you had just this area and you had more open on left and right. One of the, depending on commissioner's input and our review with the planning staff as the building owner and applicant here, one of the options could be to not have the trashcans here, but shift them here or here, and then that would allow you to still retain a little longer planting bed.
Oh.
Because you can go all the way to this dotted line and still need ADA compliance.
Well, that would be, wouldn't that be a better idea to get more planning space?
So it's accessibility and then the planting bed. So the only thing, we're not changing anything else but the boxes and the ramps.
Seems silly not to depend on where we're going to put the trashcans to have a smaller planter. It doesn't make sense to me. People can walk to the other side of the planter.
These black boxes on this plan are benches? Do you see like cubes or whatever?
Sitting cubes, yeah, benches here.
So what was the theory behind this current design, I mean, other than that minor modification? What was the design, the theory behind the trashcans there versus the seating elsewhere?
Visibility?
Yeah, I think the, people were thinking that the trashcan should be closer to the center kind of parking. From a practical standpoint, having watched people go in and out of courts a lot, the trashcans on the outside closer to the door function would work better. This is a heartbreaking issue that we found because we're in construction out there, and so Walter Phillips did the first design, and we got him Thursday, and we were talking with Mr. Stoddard, well, it was Wednesday or Thursday, and we were talking right away.
In one case, it's nice to have the bigger plaza, but I think we could still have the bigger plaza and have the slightly larger boxes and the heck, you know. Are those, the other, yeah, those are bench seats. I was just, okay. I was just wondering where the seating is. I mean, yeah, I mean.
This does open up this area for gathering a little bit around the statue.
How many ADA parking spaces do you have now? It looks like I'm counting eight.
In the.
In the whole front of the building?
There's four, two on the west wing, two on the east wing, and now they're coming to the center, and so you retain the four.
So there's only four. So the ones on east and west are being removed. On page six, it looks like they're all remaining, so I may be reading that wrong, maybe the coloring.
They've been moved into the center.
Got it.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
They were focusing on the planting plan there and they didn't change the handicap parking.
I mean, that makes sense. I just don't see the sense.
It'll stay four and four.
So other than this like trashcan issue, what kind of input are you looking for? This seems like there's little choice from an ADA perspective. You can't make it work with the cross slope. You need to have these four spaces. This seems like a good solution. What kind of input are you looking for from us to say, makes sense? Or can you think about the trashcans? I just, not sure.
Maybe I'll defer to the planning director because I don't oversee directly your site plan and then the process. We certainly wanted to bring you up to speed and make you aware of where we were going and then whether it's administrative process, what we need to do. I'll defer to Mr. Stoddard.
Sure, so that, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners, the site plan process allows for amendments, and there are two paths that amendments can go through. One is approved by the full commission, the other is administrative approval by the planning director's signature. This is a significant project, I think, as you all know, and this is also the entry to the building. And so as planning director, prior to any sort of administrative approval, I wanted to bring this to the commission and take the temperature of the members. I think in our preliminary review, some of the things that the planning and building safety staff have identified as things to consider as part of the relocation here, one, the number of plantings on the green space, that this is southern exposure for the building, and so the amount of brick and the limited number of plantings is going to make this area very hot temperature-wise. And so looking at, are there opportunities to increase soil volume and get some sort of tree coverage in here? Now, that wasn't in the original planning, planning plan that's approved, but that is something we thought about here. Whether there's a way to increase the soil volume, either running along that ramp wall or relocating the planters in such a way that you could get some, whether they're ornamental trees, something that does not overcome the building face but instead complements the building face. The other thing is the issue of folks who are using the sidewalk space and traversing across the curb line. It now becomes more difficult to do that, that you're now crossing multiple ramps and multiple sets of wing walls if you're walking across the building. The other thing is the cramped access with the location of the planters as they're shown now, especially in front of that ramp. Two things, one for anyone using the ramp, it becomes a difficult turn, especially if anybody's using the bench at the same time. The other issue is that this ramp is the one way to get into the building essentially at grade with any heavy equipment and wheel material. So whether it makes sense to shift that planter to provide a more direct access to the ramp is another item that the planning staff is asking about.
On this side, there would be room to do that. I would note that this, this planter box and this stuff and the number of trees going back to page six, well, page five has the approved, six is the reduced, was previously approved by the planning commission, and it was the former planning director that requested us to move all of the plantings against the ramp. I also would note that we are under construction. You all know we have a tight budget. I'm trying to get done by December 31st, so practically speaking, stopping to do a whole new redesign and moving the planter boxes and adding materials. Right now, we're kind of cost neutral. We're just moving a few little different curb cuts would be problematic, just a little note. It's not immediate, Mr. Stoddard is correct. This is our current entrance for loading. We are working, which would be a separate site plan and project as will be the parking of the plaza. The east wing police door entrance is staying as a second means a egress for the police or code. We would like to eventually return that to the after-hours police lobby and regrade to the rear because there's a nice slope and we can ramp and let that be a future loading area. That will not be immediate, obviously, but I wanted you to know that is something we are aware of, and Mr. Stoddard noted the concern of access here. Eventually, I would like not to be loading stuff through the front lobby.
Yeah.
But I think we could address this placement by, there's more room here to shift and shift. There is some desire to be symmetrical, but I think we could shift.
Is there parking down along the east and?
Yeah, this entire front row stays as parking as does.
But how about, you know, here and there?
This is all pavers. And then on the other side of the east wing, you'll still have parking like we do now and out by the flagpole. So basically, we're not changing any of the parking configuration.
But I was just wondering also about the landscaping for the corners of the building.
Yeah, on the east wing, and I don't have the full layouts because we just brought the front, the.
Because that would balance it out.
Yeah, the old ramp is gone and there'll be, there'll be a little bit in front of the building, but you really won't have anything. You're going to have pavers going all the way down in front of the parking on the east wing. You'll have planters wherever we took the old ramp out. That whole area that was planted before is staying, and it'll be slightly larger because the ramp is not there.
Yeah, so there'll be plant, what I'm looking at is that there, we're not just dealing with the plantings right in the middle. There are other planters that will also balance it out on either side.
There'll be planting areas, and we're actually increasing it on the east wing.
Well, I think this is something, you know, you gotta do, and I think the best thing is to get the, I think that having those parking handicap in the front is a great idea anyway. And in the increasing, but if you could just make the planters just a little bit bigger and then put the darn trashcans on the other side, I just don't see it.
Mr. Stevens, you have a.
If you move the trashcans on, would it be the opposite side of those planters? Is that the suggestion?
That would be one. I think we still have plenty of it that we're not impeding, you know, the access into stairs on court days.
All right.
I do find on court days, those trashcans would be full to the burn at the end, so it's convenient to have them as people.
But that's with, but that's with the parking. Right now, you've got the parking there and the handicap either end. So if you've got the handicap parking, the trash would be going, the people with the trash perhaps would be going to either.
Yeah. No matter what, I find them when they come towards the doors on either side.
You're saying by flipping them, you can actually extend that planter a little bit?
I think we could extend it some. I'd have to have Walter Phillips run the numbers for us. This side, there's not as much because you've got to maintain that dotted line ADA accessible width. Here, we have a little bit more.
If you're okay with the passage on that side, I'm fine with flipping it and extending it a little bit.
And we certainly.
I agree, that's a hot side of the building, so anything we can do to plan for future tree growth there, appreciating, appreciated by 20 years from now.
Try to keep the, if we get bigger, to get back to the two trees possibly, and then we would certainly work with staff.
How do they line up with the windows? How do those planting boxes line up with the courthouse window?
In the original plan, the.
Because that might be a.
You've got five windows.
Right.
So you've got one in the center and split, split, you know. And so it's still pretty much the same. You're just going to be on the outer windows.
Because that would be kind of important for symmetry, to have it somewhat.
All right, here's my, here's my thoughts on this. Seems like any issue we can resolve relatively easily. Obviously, you have to put the spaces there because the ADA compliance issue. My preference would be to see the trashcans on the outside on both cases. I think just from a usability standpoint, the access to the stairs, you want to have access to the trashcans. I find these to be just out of the way other than for the four handicap spots. I think these should be moved closer together. If you can provide this access to this point, that makes sense to me, and so that you're coming here and then being able to access the ramp more easily with bigger pieces of equipment. But my only request would be that whatever the spacing is, that this planter and that planter are symmetrical.
Right.
So you have some symmetry issues, it looks like, but beyond that, I'm okay with the smaller sizes, like see the trashcans flipped, and try to provide the access to that ramp more directly.
Okay.
And those, that would be my only guidance.
Yeah.
And otherwise, this sounds like it is a requirement based on the ADA issues, so that's my thoughts.
It just makes sense to have those parking spots right together, right in the front.
Do you think four would be a sufficient number? Four meets code and was previously reviewed and approved. It's what we have now. Now, we still have handicap parking spaces over by the community center and on the east wing side. And with the separate project, we're increasing handicap parking directly behind Chery Hill Farmhouse for the farmhouse because before the parking spot was where all the city police vehicles was, which really wasn't accessible.
And my view on this is four, while it meets code, you don't have it on this particular drawing, but this space is wide. You have this doubly wide. And so if, even if you parked on a different location from the street, you would still be able to get access. Cars would not prevent you from accessing these ramps.
Flexing.
So four is marked, but you would still, even in a wheelchair, be able to get there because of that double wide or one and a half space.
Yeah, that's for vans.
It's for the van aisle, yeah.
Yeah, van.
Just something for the commission's thoughts. So what's shown on this plan sheet is the wing walls are in concrete, and so you will have two bright spots of concrete in the middle of the plaza. There are places in the city and other jurisdictions where those wing walls are done in paper, and that might be a way to get back some of the look of the plaza.
So which walls, these walls?
No, no, I'm sorry. Wing wall is the technical term for the ramping pieces of the.
Oh, oh.
These are going to be in brick, right?
Correct.
This is all brick here.
But the ADA ramps?
I'm saying the face, the face of it.
Yeah.
That one there is shown as.
So you're saying doing that in brick? Is that to soften the light or?
Well, you need to have ADA compliance. You need to have the light contrast and tactile difference.
Right, right.
So if we have pavers here, we just need to make sure this centerpiece is normally tactile and the red, we've got to have the contrast.
What's your concern about it? Just.
The, yeah, the concrete would be, that would be the only concrete in the whole plaza.
This right here.
It would look a little strange.
You think?
I don't know.
When everything else is brick?
But as.
Yeah, but that's part of the.
I don't think that's a, I don't have as much problem about that, but if there's a way to.
And right now, aren't we putting those little? And right now, aren't we putting those little bumpy things in?
You have to have the tactile.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, tactile has to be as.
So how could you do that in brick? You can't.
No, you wouldn't do them in brick, but you could do them in black or yellow.
Oh, but you need the contrast.
Yeah, I think the yellow would be, I mean, I had more problem with. But in terms of the concrete, I don't have.
The natural colored concrete.
The ones that we had put out on the rest of the brick sidewalks, we had gone for red here and black. Or this is your stairs and this is the land here. So you're really up.
I don't have, whatever, I mean.
If we're really going to have good lighting there, right?
The stairs will be concrete and the top of your wall, I'm seeing a concrete cap.
Okay, are these cubes movable, these ones?
No, they were intended to be sort of a heavy stone, not.
And they're all asymmetrical for a reason?
That was our architect's. We're actually going to purchase them separately off of some other contracts that are more affordable.
I don't love that part of it, but that's not part of what we're, you're being asked, asking us right now. But anyway.
There may be, I don't know if you guys have looked into pricing yet, but it may be that standard benches, if that's.
I don't have a price to choose. I don't like this like, you know, off here, those are the lined up. That one's a little differently asymmetrical, three.
Yeah.
The symmetry in the front of the city hall appeals to me. But, you know, that's my thought on it.
I think, but of course, it might be a minor site plan amendment to come back. But I think benches or something, I think the hope was to use some of our pink granite and do some accents with that. We could probably do a blend in. So we'll get the core of the construction done and us moving back. Since I'm here, if I could take advantage of the opportunity, because I know you all, given your conversation before, are really environmentally oriented. We have been preliminarily approved for eight charging stations by, by America.
Yes.
Awesome.
We got the agreements this week and the under review. We have two conduits pre-planned into the front. And then there were four on the garage in the back. So we're looking at trying to maximize.
You only asked for five when we went through this, you're getting eight.
They're offering them to us free.
That's even better.
All install free, cover the initial operating cost free. And they will be at the west end where the handicapped parking spots were. So it'll actually work really well when you have the post. Won't be in the front of City Hall, it'll be in front of the west wing and blend into the wall.
Is your level twos? Two hundred twenty volts?
I would hope so. Other than that, you have to be parked out there overnight.
We are trying to negotiate that we'd love to have just a regular receptacle in them for the farmer's market general leaders, but we haven't gotten there yet. So that was some really positive news. And then we have the video out there. The walls are up, the HVAC. New unit should be installed this week on the rear. The water line is in.
Seems like they're working very hard. Every time I go by there, it's just all kinds of noise and.
The rain was not very helpful, but we're trying to keep on schedule.
Is that going to meet the December 31st deadline?
So far, it's, you know, a little bit of nip and tuck because of the last few rains. But the block, block wall is up, there's a place for the cornerstone. It got too wet in the back and it couldn't drain out. So our biggest thing is they had to haul all the dirt out.
We've got to have a new cornerstone?
Yep.
And my big question is always on those.
It's already been chiseled.
On those stairs. We're going to have good lighting. We're going to have good lighting because right now, you know, well, that light doesn't even work half the time.
Yeah.
But it's difficult going down those stairs.
Rewiring new accessible OSHA compliance stairs. And I'm proud to say right now, knock on wood, all of the parking lot lights are working. These will be new.
Could, okay, are we done with the, it's bringing into mind something that I would like to ask Cindy about. Why Cindy, why? Or does anybody realize that none of the streetlights down at the Lincoln Building are working either on the Washington Street side or on the Maple Street side?
Yep, we have an active, public works put in a work order into Dominion for theirs. And we've been talking to Lincoln.
Because they've been not working for a long while.
And we've also run down, yeah.
And I keep.
It's time to transition about electricity.
Kate's working on that too. But yeah, it's an underground circuit issue, it appears. We have older infrastructure on Dominion's side.
Yeah, because I'm saying, eh, that's not good. But I didn't know if it was maybe due to the reworking of Washington Street. But it just doesn't look good at all and it's not safe.
It's being worked.
Good, I'm glad you were here to answer my question.
Yes, thank you.
Then I can't, don't have to bug you.
So we are working to have us down time. The staff actually may not be moving back until January because we'll be doing everything. Do the physical move part, but.
Just in time for CIP.
Yep. We're working on how we do CIP and land use applications while moving again. But staff are adaptable and flexible.
Hold a tablet, you can do it while walking.
That's right.
I'll tell you, poor staff.
All right, well, thank you.
Poor staff.
Appreciate the time and the feedback and we'll follow up with Mr. Stoddard.
Then we have on here 13 is correspondence. I actually feel like we addressed that unless Mrs. Varokis' letter, is that what we're referring to?
There was this as well as a, is that the only correspondence item? I think that's there just to make sure that there's a dedicated space in the planning commission's package for correspondence items. That this is something I've borrowed from regional groups. And it's just a way to make sure that public comments that are received, they get to the planning commission as a package instead of dribbling in as they, as they arrive.
There's two.
I have the one.
Winters.
Yes, Ms. Winters spoke to us just a moment ago. Yeah, and I got that about the Trader Joe's comment. So we did receive those. So we don't have to, we just acknowledge we have received.
Just for information.
Got it. Okay.
I really like how you've reworked the agenda and everything and, you know, just, I think things, when we hit.
I'm trying to point this way because it's a team effort and Deborah.
Deborah's awesome.
Is the one doing all the work.
Deborah's awesome, but I just think that when we get going full bore in September, which is right down the way, you know, we're going to need all the efficiencies that we can get. And I've heard that the site plan stuff for Founder's Row is mammoth.
So the fourth, just before we adjourn here, the fourth, the main item we're dealing with is the Founder's Row site plan? Or is there other, but again, this is normally a busy meeting, the fourth.
That is something that we're still working it out with the applicant. We're also looking at whether this can satisfy, one of the things that the council is looking for when the conversation came to them was a dedicated time for the neighborhood and residents to be brought up to speed as well on any changes in the materials and what they would be seeing at the site plan. So that's one thing we're talking about internally is whether that, the night of the fourth could be reserved as an opportunity to both inform residents about what's going on as well as hear from the planning commission about things you all would want to see for action at the next meeting.
Okay, are there other agenda items you see on that evening or this is, this is our main focus?
That is the main focus. I think absent that item, I think there's exploration of whether we would even cancel that meeting on the fourth because it is after a long weekend.
Okay.
It's also the first day of school.
And a lot of parents have been working hard to do that.
Right, right.
It's always a busy night. We've had it the night after Labor Day the last 10 years, so it's normal, but it's a busy night. So I'm glad to hear that the agenda is not.
It is currently the only item on the agenda, so without Founder's Row, it would be likely that the meeting itself would just be canceled.
And I might request that it remains so. If other stuff comes in, then we can try to keep that one sane. Because it's a late, it's an early morning and a late night for us parents. Okay, anything else? Otherwise, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to note for the final year of my chairmanship, I have not had a gala. It's been really tough.
Can we look to getting a toy gala?
A toy? What a squeak.
Reprimental joints, squeaks.
Long as it's not plastic.
Turkey, turkey, turkey.
Plastic's fine, I just want to go.